To make your suggestions and to have a wholesome interaction with the members of the Nevis Island Administration. I want to thank all who have come this evening. I want to ask for travelling mercies for those who are on their way. For those of you who are joining us via radio, via NTV, via YouTube, Facebook, or any other form of social media that we might be on right now, I want to say welcome. Of course, before we start, we are a godly government, so we like to offer a word of prayer. I will call on Minister Brand to offer a word of prayer for us this evening. Could we kindly stand?
Let us pray. Holy and most loving Father, we thank you for this opportunity once again as a government to sit and listen to the people and to have a conversation with the people. We pray of God that our discourse tonight would be one of information to the general public in an effort to give them an idea as to what we have been doing as a government. Pray for those who are on their way here that they will get here safely. And a prayer of God that we will have an informative discussion tonight. And that the people who are listening and those who are viewing would get a better understanding of what their government is doing on the island of Nevis. Take charge, oh God, of tonight's meeting, that it go in order, and everything will be done to your honour and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have at the head table the Premier of Nevis, the Honourable Mark Brantley, the Deputy Premier of Nevis, the Honourable Alexis Jeffers. We have the Honourable Spencer Brand, who just prayed for us, the Honourable Eric Evelyn and myself. Let me offer apologies on behalf of the Honourable Hazel Brandy Williams, who is not feeling so well tonight, so she could not be here with us this evening. You're going to hear from each of the ministers and from the premier. And then we will have an opportunity, after that is complete, for an interaction between those of you who are here and have questions. So you can put your questions forward, you can put your suggestions forward, and if you only have comments, you can also put your comments forward. We hope for a wholesome interaction, and as I have said before, it presents a wonderful opportunity for you, the people of Nevis, to come and have an interaction with the government that you have put your trust in. We are at the Charles Town Anglican School Hall. I hope that's correct.
Yes.
That's the correct terminology. We are at the Charles Town Anglican School Hall. That means we're in the parish of St Paul's. And this parish, of course, is represented by none other than the Honourable Spencer Brand. And we want to thank you, the people of Nevis, and thank you, the people of St Paul's, for putting your trust in him. And certainly, when he takes to the mic and speaks about his stewardship, I'm sure that the people of Charles Town will realise that they have put their choice, they have put their trust in the best possible person. And he will give the reasons why the people of Charles Town, in particular, could continue to trust in his stewardship, in his representation, and also in the representation of the Concerned Citizens Movement and this government as a whole. I will start the ball rolling by giving just a few tidbits. I don't propose to be too long, but just a few tidbits on my particular area, which is education. And we know since the whole situation that we have been in here in the Federation and pretty much everywhere in the world, that we have been dealing with the ravages of the COVID-19 virus. And while we here in St Kitts and Nevis, and in particular here on Nevis, we have had no confirmed cases of COVID-19 for some months now. We still live under the constant threat of COVID-19 coming in. As we would have heard a few days ago, the borders, that the country is working towards getting the borders open in another few months. We heard that there could be a possible date of sometime in October for a border opening. And so we have to live by constantly preparing ourselves for the eventuality of COVID-19 coming back into the island and coming back into the Federation. So our schools have been out since the end of March. Physically, we have not been able to have physical classes. And a lot has been going on behind the scenes to ensure that come September, we will be able to put our students back into the classroom, albeit not in the same way that things had been done before. We now have to adhere to the rules of social distancing. We have to ensure that our class spacing in classes such that students will not be up on each other. We have to ensure that our schools are sanitised. The Ministry of Education here on Nevis is working very hard. Indeed, earlier this week, yesterday, yesterday, my memory seems to be going a little bit, getting up there in age. That was just a little light moment. But yesterday, the Cabinet got a briefing from the Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Education and the Principal Education Officer on some of the preparations that are being made by the Ministry of Education to ensure that come the 7th of September, our schools are in tip-top shape for the reopening. We have already started some training this week. Our school heads, the principals and head teachers, they are out and engaged in training. We have to retrain our school staff to deal with the whole COVID-19 situation. We will be doing some, what we call, deep cleaning on our schools over the next week to week and a half. And then that would be followed up by some training of our school custodians and our school cleaners to ensure that when students are brought back into the school environment, that the school environment is the safest and best possible environment. Specifically, I want to talk a little bit about the early childhood. This is something that we have spoken about before. And I know since a few weeks ago, there was an announcement that some early childhood centres on the island of St Kitts were being reopened. And so the question came in about early childhood centres here on the island of Nevis. And a few weeks ago, I would have addressed that when I said that we have put all of the necessary things in place, and it's just for the schools to meet the necessary thresholds to reopen. Unfortunately, some of the schools have not done that yet, so they have not been able to reopen. And when I'm talking about schools, I'm talking about early childhood centres here. So some of them have not yet been able to meet what has been put in place. So they have not been able to reopen. So we are still working with them to ensure that we can have all of the centres open and so that the kids can return to daycare and the parents can now return to the workplace. We've had some disruptions with parents who have not been able to return to the workplace because they have to be home with the children since the onset of COVID-19. The ministry is also exploring other options to have our children housed since now the spacing requirements for the school are being strictly enforced. In the past, we've had situations where the full spacing requirements were not enforced. But due to the onset of COVID, we have to ensure that our decors and so on are properly spaced, that the students each have a set square footage of space that they would occupy. We are also putting in place a strict cleaning regimen for these early learning centres. And there is also a strict sanitising and hand washing regiment that has been put in place. So when the students come and they are going to enter into the facility, there is a strict sanitising procedure that is put in place. So we expect fully that come September, our early childhood centres will be reopened. We expect that our primary schools will be open, and we expect that our high schools will also be open. I'm going to pause here, and I guess a bit later on, if there are any questions, I will be happy to answer questions. So I want to now move along and call up our next speaker to present. And our next speaker will be none other than the Honourable Eric Evelyn.
Thank you very much, Minister Lybird. And let me say good evening to all who are here, and especially good evening to my Cabinet colleagues here on the platform. Of course, it is indeed a pleasure for us to be with you again this evening as we continue our conversations with the people. Thank you. It is indeed our pleasure for us to be here to continue our conversations with the people, which we would have started a couple of weeks ago in the St Thomas's area. Then we would have moved to St James, then to St John's. Now we are here in Charles Town. And of course, next week, we're going to round things off in my constituency of St George. It is very important that ever so often, we go out and meet with members of the public. Of course, we have a lot of work to do in our various offices, but it is important as well that we go out and meet members of the community within the community themselves. Now, I want to, before I just get into my little brief discourse in terms of my ministry, I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate the executive, the recently elected executive of the Women's Arm. When we had our town hall meeting last week, you would have heard from Madame Minister Brandy Williams, she would have brought you the results of the election of the Youth Arm. And now, last evening, as a matter of fact, we had the elections for the Women's Arm. And so we are delighted that we now have an active Youth Arm and an active Women's Arm. And of course, the Women's Arm would have been with the party for some time, but have been dormant, has been dormant for some time. And now the Women's Arm is back in full force. The Women's Arm is back in full force. And if I could just report to you, in the absence of Madame Minister, the executive of the Women's Arm, the President is Latoya Jones, the Vice President is Yvonne Glasgow, the Secretary is Jessica Scarborough, the Treasurer, Sonia Williams, the Assistant Secretary Treasurer, Leona Didya, and the Public Relations Officer is Miss Tessa Manners. And so we want to congratulate the members, the executive members, and all of the persons who are part of that Women's Arm. We're expecting big things from them. And of course, once again, we want to congratulate the Youth Arm as well. I think as a government, we have been doing a lot of work. As the CCM-led Nevis Island Administration, we have been very busy. And I believe that the people of Nevis have seen the results of our hard work, and that is why so many persons across the island are rallying with the party and rallying with the government. And that is why it's also important that we, as a government, come and speak to the people in these town hall meetings and have these conversations. Now, as I speak about Women's Arm and Youth Arm, it's a good time for me to just speak briefly about an activity that was held last evening by the Department of Youth, of course, of which I'm in charge. And I would have spoken briefly about it last week, but the event was held last night. And I'm here to report that it was a very classy, well organised, well executed event. And I want to give high commendation and kudos to the Director of Youth, Miss Curtis Clark, and her team for putting such a wonderful event together. There is an initiative at the Department of Youth called Youth Impact 12, where we try to honour and celebrate one young person per month in a different field. And last night, we had six persons who were honoured. And as I said, it was a very, very classy event. I must say that when the idea came to me as the minister, I would have raised some concerns, because of course, we know that these are unprecedented times when we have to be very prudent with our spending. And I brought the concern that I do not want an event that is expensive, that is going to be costing a lot of money. And I was assured that the event will be sponsored partly, and I want to thank the general sponsors who came forward, but the Director was adamant that we must honour the young people. And I'm happy that she went along with it. It was an inexpensive event on the part of the government, but it was nonetheless very, very classy. What I particularly liked about the event is that you had not only the local flavour, but you had a regional and international flavour as well. Because the six persons who were honoured, they had persons who are from overseas, regionally and internationally, who had recorded messages congratulating the awardees. You had messages from the likes of people like Lance Witaker, Darren Ganga, Ina Harvey of Aika in agriculture, and several other persons from around the globe who would have sent congratulatory messages to our young people. I want once again to just say who those young persons are, and once again, heartily congratulate them. I believe they are now role models, and young persons in Nevis will be looking up to them. The persons who were honoured were Melissa Clark in Sports Excellence, Brandon Powell in Information Technology, Verna Grant in Education and Lifelong Learning, Ravina Passard in Youth in Agriculture, Delsia Burke, Voluntarism, and Cecilia Creasy Stanley, Entrepreneurship with Specialty in Culinary Arts. Now, as I said, it was a very classy event, and the young persons who were honoured were over the moon. They were delighted. And what I also liked about the event last evening is that the person who actually catered for the event, for the finger foods that we had, was actually one of the young persons who was honoured last evening. And that person is Miss Crecy Stanley. And of course, she has moved from just being an ordinary chef to now the head chef, one of the head chefs at Hermitage. She has now opened her own catering business. And these are the kind of strides that we want to see our young people continue to make. The good thing about it as well, yesterday, they were honoured on the occasion of International Youth Day. And the theme for that was youth engagement for global action. I want, at this point, just encourage our young people on Nevis to continue to engage and engage in meaningful ways. I want them to continue to engage with the Department of Youth, because that is what we are there for. We are there to assist them in any way possible. And I'm happy that we were able to have this award ceremony last night to celebrate our young people. We often hear about the bad that young people do, but when the young people do good things, they must be celebrated. And so, once again, I want to congratulate these six young persons, and I want to encourage them to continue to keep the light burning, because now other young persons will be looking up to you. And I want the other young persons in Nevis as well to aspire towards becoming a member of the Youth Impact 12 awardee. I believe that probably this is something that we might be having on an annual basis, and we want our young people to aspire to receiving these prestigious awards. So once again, congratulations to the Director and her team at the Department of Youth, and to the young people who would have been awarded last evening. Since we are still talking about young people, I also want to congratulate, which I did last week as well, but it is incumbent on me to do it again tonight, because he will be, hopefully, on show performing next week. I want to congratulate Mr Kesron Archibald, who is from Brownhill, from the Premier's constituency, and I'm sure he's very proud of that. And I think he's the only cricketer from St Kitts and Nevis who would have made it to the St Kitts-Nevis Patriots team for the CPL that will be starting, the CPL tournament that will be starting in Trinidad and Tobago next week, Tuesday, I think, on the 18th. And so Kesron is young, talented, full of potential, and we are proud of him as an envision that he would have made it onto the St Kitts-Nevis Patriots. We have always lamented that the name St Kitts-Nevis Patriots at least should have on some cricketers from St Kitts and Nevis. And we are happy that Kesron has made it there. We believe that he will do well. We want to wish him well from this rostrum. And as I continue to say, I have extra bragging rights, that even though the Premier will brag that he's from his constituency, I can brag that he's from my club, that I'm the president of the Empire Sports Club. And so I want to wish Kesron well. For those of you who listened to the news, he was on the Von Radio News this morning and the evening before, they would have called him in Trinidad and Tobago, and he would have reacted to his pick or his selection on the St Kitts-Nevis Patriots team. So, Kezzy, good luck to you. Represent well, represent yourself, represent St Kitts and Nevis. And we are hoping that one day soon, that Kesron will make it onto the West Indies team. Now, very, very quickly, I'm just going to just mention one other area of my ministry, and that is social services. Of course, we know that we are still very much within the pandemic. We are living in some unprecedented times, and we know that it is a very, very challenging time for all of us, especially financially. There are a lot of persons who have been laid off. And when we were in the heart of the pandemic, when the pandemic started, we were overwhelmed at social services. And I have to say that because of the fact that there are many persons who are still without a job, many persons who are still going through some very tough times economically and financially, we continue to be overwhelmed with a lot of requests. And my Social Services Department continue, we continue to respond and respond positively. I want to just caution the persons who continue to call and continue to request things, that there's normally a process in terms of honouring your request, and so we're asking you to have patience. If you make a call to the office tomorrow and you do not get the response the same day, you will get, the call will be answered, but your response, it has to be processed. And so we are asking you to exercise a bit of caution. I personally, as the minister, have been getting calls, even today when I was in Parliament in St Kitts, I was getting calls, you know? So we are asking you to exercise patience. The Department of Social Services continue to work with you and work with you the best possible way we can in order to, so that we can process your request and we can respond in a positive way. Most of the requests now are coming through the requests for food vouchers and food packages. And so we continue, and I want to say once again, I'm proud of the Social Services Department for the work that they continue to do. And we, as a government, we at the Social Services Department, we continue to try hard to ensure that no one, no one in Nevis goes hungry during these unprecedented times. I'm going to leave it there for now, and of course, I'll be willing to take any questions that anyone may have.
I want to thank the Honourable Eric Evelyn for his brief presentation, brief but substantive. And of course, if there are any questions pertaining to his area, when the time for that comes, I'm sure persons would want to ask those questions. We're moving right along, and our next speaker for this evening will be the Deputy Premier, the Honourable Alexis Jeffers.
Thank you very much, Minister Lybird. And I want to start by bidding goodnight to those of you who have come here to be a part of this town hall meeting this evening. I also want to say goodnight to all the persons listening via Von Radio and other media houses, and I believe we are being streamed as well. But it's good to be here in Charles Town. I also want to recognise all of my colleagues here at the head table, the Honourable Premier, Mark Brantley, and my colleagues. It is good to be here in Charles Town. I believe we have come here time and time again for town hall meetings, and every time we come, there is always something important to report on. We have been told over the last couple of weeks to be brief with our presentations, because of course, persons in the audience want to interact or dialogue with us at the head table. So I am going to be mindful of that as I make my presentation. And of course, we would want to also give the representative for the constituency of St Paul's at least ample time to speak this evening as well. But I want to start this way with respect to my particular presentation by bringing the island of Nevis up to date as to what is happening during this hurricane season in terms of what we are admonishing you, the Nevisian public, to do from the standpoint of disaster management and preparedness. We know that there is currently a tropical storm that is some distance away from us, yes, but within our area, and it bears us paying attention to this particular storm. One never knows what will happen tomorrow, or the day after, or the day after that. But our information and the advisories that we have seen is that by the weekend, we may have some weather system to deal with. We continue to be prayerful, but also we definitely have to continue to be vigilant. My understanding is that this system is about 850-plus miles east-southeast of us here in the Lee Wood Islands, and may very well pass north of us. That being said, any slight shift of the system can have some effect on us. And that is why I indicated before that we have to continue to be vigilant. As of this evening, this system was named as Josephine. And this storm has certainly surpassed or broken the record that existed before, meaning it is the quickest or fastest we have actually gotten to the letter J since 2005. I believe in 2005, Jose was a storm that held the record then, but now it's been surpassed by Josephine. So it is about 45 miles per hour, the system is packing winds at that particular intensity, and could get even stronger as the days go by. So I want to admonish all of us to backcheck your plans and the things that you'll do in preparation for storms here on the island of Nevis, or tropical storms or hurricanes. Of course, we'll have to do a few things that are consistent with our actions at this time in terms of checking your insurance policy, make sure you're up to date there, check your evacuation plans, make sure you have your non-perishable goods on hand in the event, adequate water, and also, most importantly, is to continue to monitor all of the advisories that have been issued by radio station, television station. Some of us now walk around with our smartphones and can get real-time up-to-date information. So we want to continue to be vigilant in that regard. We have always been a resilient people. We've always been a prayerful people here on the island of Nevis, but it only takes one storm to create havoc here on the island of Nevis. Of course, the appeal that we put out night after night, day after day, it is important because we always have to be reminded of the past and what we would have encountered in the past. We also have to be reminded of what has happened in our neighbouring islands, in terms of Dominica, Antigua, Barbuda, the British Virgin Islands, the US Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico and those countries, and islands who would have had to deal with storms in the past, in the most recent past, even in some cases when the storm was not headed in their direction. Just a slight shift would have brought it within close proximity of these islands and countries and have created some difficulties. So I want us to continue to be vigilant here on the island of Nevis. So I want us to continue to be vigilant here on the island of Nevis. I know we have various situations that we're dealing with. Of course, you know, the pandemic is still with us, we are still on the state of emergency. But I want us to continue to dig even deeper and understand that this is a period of time where we have to find ways and means to survive, and that is ultimately what we'll, what we'll do during this time. Ladies and gentlemen, that is my admonition in disaster management and my advice for this particular season that we're in, the hurricane season. I want now to turn quickly to agriculture because, of course, I'm the Minister of Agriculture. Sometimes I might sound like a broken record when I repeat some of the things that we have been doing, but it is important because my thinking and my teaching has always been, repetition is always good communication because that is when persons will recall, persons will understand, and persons will have that knowledge. So there's nothing wrong with repeating. But I want to say to you this evening that we continue with our distribution of seedlings at the Department of Agriculture. Earlier this week on Monday, we would have handed out some seedlings, and we continue today. We gave seedlings to our backyard farmers. Today, we would have given the seedlings to our much larger and more established farmers. And this is all a part of our thrust to ensure that persons who have developed that interest in agriculture, who have that love for agriculture, and who are making agriculture their main business or a part of their, their business plan, that they get the necessary inputs that we have to offer to give them that additional boost to produce more. And while I'm at that, I want to commend all those who would have taken up that challenge and those who would have seen it fit to engage in some form of cultivation, some form of production, because ultimately, we have to eat. Every one of us have to eat on a daily basis. Are we going to continue eating imported goods, canned stuff, or what we call them, processed item? Thank you. Or are we going to go to what we have been doing in recent times, eating freshly produced products? I believe that we have seen, in my opinion, I don't have the data to show or to prove what I'm going to say, but I do believe most of our people are living a much healthier lifestyle since February or March of this year. And it is there to show because when you go around Charleston, you look at the persons you interact with and you hear what reports they're giving you, it just seems so. And maybe I might be proven incorrectly, but someone can get to the mic this evening and tell me, I am feeling far much better since I've been living out of the earth in terms of eating ground provision, cooking more soup, eating more green leafy products. That is what I want us to continue to do. And this pandemic situation have certainly taught us some lessons, and have certainly taught us that it has, well, not taught us, but it continued to teach us lessons to go back to those old-time days when we used to live out of the ground, so to speak, eating our sweet potatoes, eating our melons, eating all of the root crops that you can talk about because they can be produced within months, yeah? So I want to encourage us to continue on this particular pathway that we are on because there can only be good things that come out of our pursuit to eat better and to live a better high, better lifestyle or healthier lifestyle. While I'm at that, let me put in a plug for one of our most established and prolific farmer, Mr Makitras up there at A1 Farms, who would have actually sent some photos out today that he has seasoned pepper, seasoned peppers, and also eggplants. Now, those of us who are old enough who would have consumed a lot of eggplants in the past, we ate it because our grandparents would have used it in their mackerel and
Saltfish.
Saltfish and mackerel as well, too. And we eat it because we were given that to eat. But when you do the research on eggplants, you would realise that it is one of the most loaded plants out there or products out there with various vitamin and minerals that you never knew, such as vitamin C, vitamin K, B+, folic acid, fibre. It is a heavily loaded
Vegetable.
Vegetable to consume. My agriculture specialist here, he can be worse. Well, I taught him, so he's now teaching me back. But I want us to patronise all local farmers, a farmer such as Makitras up there at A1 Farms. There are other farmers around the island I can think of over in Potworks area. We have Donald Daniel. You can patronise, there's a police officer who have just retired, Bedford, who is also doing some planting over there up in New River. We have quite a number of farmers like Mike Brown, Jama has, Jama, I, I know him as Jama, Rasta Jama, Griffin, he has an outlet right there on the highway there in, in New River. You have Merla, Five Field. I'm calling their names because we are so proud of their contribution towards food security and sustainability here on the island of Nevis that you have to give them a plug. Down here in Prospect, you know, Emonteen Thompson and Billy Thompson. We, we have over in the Keesby area, we know of Mansa and all those other farmers who are producing over there. All up and down Nevis, we can say that our farmers have risen to the task, and our backyard farmers as well have risen, risen to the task and risen to the call because with these seedlings that we are, are giving out to our farmers, this is our contribution to them to say, go ahead, plant more and produce more. So I want us to give them all of the support that can be given. While I'm speaking of that, I also want to mention that we have some wires that are coming in shortly to the island of Nevis in the next week to ten days, fencing wire, that is. We're going to work out the logistics in terms of whether there'll be half price or how we're going to distribute them and the likes, so more information will be available in that regard. But in terms of fishing, to our fisherfolks, we received a quantity of fish pot wires recently, so we have started selling those at half price. The selling was done yesterday and today, and it will continue until the supplies are exhausted. So you can visit the Charles Town Fisheries Complex down there on Market Street to get your fish pot wires, half price, and also fishing gear is also being sold there at half price. So we're doing all that we can from the Nevis Island Administration standpoint to ensure that we're providing our livestock farmers or crop farmers or fisherfolks with all of the necessary incentives for them to do more, to produce more. And I want to just send out an appeal. If we can possibly make the prices better than they are, please do so. I believe that local products can be consumed even more if the price is right. Farmers will say otherwise, but I'm admonishing them to look at your price, get your crops off your hands at the best possible price. Also, quickly, down in the New River area, I just had to put this on the table as well, too. We have completed the repairs of a walk-in freezer facility down there at New River. It cost us somewhere in the region of forty thousand dollars to repair that freezer. Now, the farmers in the area, though, can have access to that freezer for the excess produce that you have or vegetables that you have. There is space available at a fee. I cannot say what the fee is here this evening. You would have to call the Department of Agriculture to find out what the rental fees are. So that freezer is available to the farmers in the area or any farmer, once there's space available, because you can have an abundance of a particular crop today. Without the proper storage, in a few days, it's gone. But if you have an abundance and you can store some of that, then a few weeks down the road, you still will have those vegetables for sale. So that is available to our farmers. But ladies and gentlemen, I will say to you that we continue to offer incentives by way of free plowing and also any other equipment that is necessary with a backup service and the likes that we are offering that at the Department of Agriculture, and we want persons to take advantage in terms of calling and getting the necessary requirements. And let's see how we can help to all farmers to continue to do what we know they are capable of doing and what they're mandated to do. I do believe that I have spent enough time on the microphone this evening. As I've been told before, do not stay long, so I'll leave it there for now. But of course, the interaction later, I'm sure can be a longer and healthier interaction so more information can be divulged. Thank you very much for listening, and it was indeed my pleasure.
Thank you very much, Deputy Premier, for that presentation. I think the presentation certainly on the, from the disaster point of view on the hurricane season, that we are already at Josephine, and it's the fastest we've gotten to J in quite some time. And it just underscores what the scientists and the weather people have been saying, that we are in for one of the most active hurricane seasons this year in 2020. Some people have been saying that 2020 is one of those years. And so I would want to join you in encouraging people to start to prepare yourselves. Of course, we would be hoping that God will continue to spear us here in Nevis and certainly in the Federation, but we still at the same time should definitely prepare ourselves for any eventuality. So I want to thank you for highlighting that. We are moving right along, and our next speaker will be none other than the representative for Charles Town himself, the Honourable Spencer Band.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, Honourable Troy Youth and Lyberg. I want to recognise my colleagues here at the head table, Premier, Deputy Premier, Minister Evelyn. I also want to say a very pleasant good evening to those who are listening and viewing via the various platforms. I want to start my very brief presentation tonight by offering a word of condolences to the family of Dylan White, a youngster who was recently taken away from us. I want to say to his aunt, Mimi, and certainly to the entire family, and offer them my heartfelt and sincere condolences on the loss of this young man. I want to encourage our people that this kind of activity is not necessarily the best way to settle any kind of differences. I believe it was Mahatma Gandhi who said that an iPhone, I would leave the world blind. And I want to suggest that despite whatever the differences may be or the difficulty may be, that this may not be the best way to settle it. So I want to offer my condolences, and I hope that God through his love and his mercy would ensure that at the end of it, that there will be justice, not only in this case, but in all those other cases that are still pending. I want to also say a very hearty thank you to the persons who would have responded to my one-on-one on yesterday. And it's an initiative that I have embarked on. I believe that it is something that a number of persons responded to very wonderfully. And it so happened that my first interaction was with a wonderful elderly lady all the way from Hanleys Road. And it's an initiative that I'm hoping to have on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month at the office there on Government Road. So the next one-on-one interaction will be on the twenty-sixth of August, starting from two P M. to six P M. So I really want to thank the folks who would have shown up and expressed their concerns. And I know that based on the conversation that we would have had, they are seeking some redress in a number of matters that I believe that are not overly difficult. I want to also say congratulations to the recently elected and recently energised Youth Arm of the Concerned Citizen Movement. I see the President is here tonight. I want to say congratulations to him and his entire executive. And likewise, I also want to say congratulations to the re-energised and reformed, rebranded Women's Arm. The President is also here tonight. I am very much encouraged by these two occurrences because I am one who believe that, and this is my personal view, I am one who believe that elected politicians ought not to stick around for too long. And that is my, like I said, that is my personal view. I believe that with the energy and youth and vigour that I am seeing in these two organisations, it therefore means that those of us who are in this position can rest assured that the future of this party, the Concerned Citizen Movement Party, and the future of the government of Nevis are in extremely good hands, and I am very much encouraged by that. So I want to say congratulations to both organisations and to both bodies that was recently formed. The Chairman said, said that he is giving me a lot of time tonight, but I am one who believe, I'm not a long-winded person by nature, but I just wanted to give a few updates on a few things that were taking place here in the parish of St Paul's and by extension, the constituency of St Paul's. I am delighted to report that the Quodocote Project would have completed today, that that is from the top of the Bypass Road all the way down to the base and from Big Rock down to TDC. This was an initiative that I campaigned on. This was a commitment that I gave to the people of St Paul's, and I am truly thankful that my Cabinet colleagues would have supported me in this initiative and ensured that the finances were available so that we could have implemented this project. And I just want to use this opportunity to say to the people of Quodocote, I came to you and I said exactly what I wanted to do, and you entrusted your confidence in me, and I'm happy to report that I would have started the process of delivering my commitment. It is a project that I believe can bring much improvement to the area of Quodocote. There is, however, another concern in the area, and that is the drainage issue that we face that goes down to past the Griffin area from all the way up in Quodocote. And I believe that you would recognise that due to our financial constraint and due to the downturn, so to speak, in our revenue collection, that that component of the project would have to be deferred for some other time. I want to say that it is something that I am hoping that in the near future, we can ensure that we have completed because it is of great concern for the residents in that area. So I just wanted to say to the people of Quodocote that that is another component of the project that we hope would come on stream sometime in the future. I also believe I also believe that while we continue to complete some of these major, major road projects, there is also a significant demand for housing in the St. Paul's area. And my colleague Minister, the Honorable Alexis Jeffers, would have indicated just last week that there are some plans afoot to acquire some additional lands in the Charles Town area. The truth is that there is a significant demand for housing in St. Paul's. The good people at Nevis Housing would have sent me a file of over 100 applicants for housing in the St. Paul's area. And I want to make an appeal to persons in the constituency of St. Paul's who might have significant tracts of land. I believe that the government is willing to purchase land, but at an acceptable and a reasonable price. Let me say that again, at an acceptable and a reasonable price. Yes, I understand we are in the town area and the price of land may be what it is, but I want to suggest to those persons who may have been sitting on large tracts of lands for many years, can come and have a conversation with the government and if the resources are available, I'm sure we can work something out to help develop the constituency of St. Paul's. I am very much encouraged that most of the infrastructure work in the first plot of land that we would have purchased in the Hamilton area have been completed. The good Minister of Housing would have indicated last week that social security financing, he's waiting on that and I'm hoping that once that is in place, we can have that project in the Hamilton area up and running so that those persons who would have applied for those homes can receive their homes once the financing is in place. I want to very briefly switch to another important project that we have been working on and that is the water filtration system in the Hamilton area. You would recall that the NIA through the Ministry of Water Services would have embarked on a filtration system project there at the Hamilton area. And we have been delayed because of COVID, we are at the final stage where the technical team, that is to do the final installation of the system, have not been able to travel to the island of Nevis because our borders are closed. I am hoping that during the month of September, that they can be on island and we will be able to see that filtration system completed and the additional source of water placed into the system for the people of Nevis. I believe that with the constant expansion of housing on the island of Nevis, the increase in water storage capacity is extremely important and by extension, this water filtration system in the Hamilton area is critically important. We have also decided to embark on some additional water drilling and we have in place a proposal. We also are at the moment seeking some financing to undertake that water drilling program and we believe that initiative as well will ensure that we have additional sources of water on the island of Nevis and for the people of Nevis. I am one who believe that Nevis is ripe for major expansion and I believe that if we continue to put in place the necessary infrastructure, water, electricity, now road networks and now the TVET program that will be coming on stream, I believe that the island of Nevis is positioning itself for greater development. I want to also update you from a planning point of view and just today, the good folks at the Planning Department would have given me some additional encouraging news that our construction sector continue to show signs of growth and they have indicated that a number of additional applications continue to come into the Planning Department and the hope is that they can have these approved very quickly so that we can see additional construction sites on the island of Nevis. You would recognize that the government would have offered a number of incentives to homeowners or property developers as it regards to various incentives in tax exemption and I'm convinced that the general public continue to respond to those initiatives. I know that the ambitious agenda that we would have had in St. Paul's for this year, we have had to put that in check. One of the initiatives that one would recall that I campaigned on long hard has been the multipurpose facility for St. Paul's. The truth is that the Cabinet would have given their blessing for that project based on a number of modification and of course, financing. The reality is that because of COVID and because of the economic downturn, financing is not really available for that project, so once again, we'll have to put that on pause and on hold until we see a significant improvement in the financial optic on the island of Nevis. I just want to advise that we are in the process of seeking at the Public Works Department, one or two masons, and when I say masons, I'm talking about very skilled masons, one or two carpenters, a joiner and an auto body mechanic there at the mechanic shop. We are also hoping that persons who would seek to apply for these vacancies are persons who are experienced. We believe that there must be persons who can, you know, step into those vacancies without much supervision or without anyone having to oversee them on a daily basis. So we want persons who are extremely professional, who have the necessary experience because we have one or two vacancies in those trades. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say to you also that as we continue to ensure that we take care of the people's business, I want to encourage all of us to drive very carefully on our roads. Just today, a gentleman said to me that he had a look at, we just completed Quodoc Road and like I said, Quodoc Road was just completed today. And he said he stood at the bottom of Quodoc Road and he was a little scared actually because when he looked at that stretch of road, he's hoping that our young people in particular would use the road with juke here and attention. I want to, I want to appeal to our people that please, 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 the life that you save on our roads may be your very own, so I'm asking you to use our roads with juke here and attention. And ensure that at the end of the day, as a matter of fact, there is no place in Nevis that is, what, 10 minutes drive at 35 miles an hour or even 25 miles an hour. And while the government is expending these significant sums in these road infrastructure, we want our people to use them as wisely as possible so that you can ensure that you get to your journey safely. I want to end by saying that while we are wrapping up in the Brown Hill area and we hope that we will be able to be out of Brown Hill in another week, a week and a half. And I know that the Minister of Disaster would have indicated that there may be some weather on the way, I'm hoping that it won't affect us too severely to cause any delay in that Brown Hill road project. We are hoping that once we are now completed with Quodoc Road and then with Brown Hill, that we will go to the good village of Butler's and I know that the people of Butler's have been more than patient over the years and also we hope to go in Bath Village and I also know that the good people of Bath Village have been more than patient as well. So those we are hoping would be our two next major projects as it regards to road infrastructure and I want to say to the residents of those various villages, kindly cooperate with our Public Works Department and at the end of the day, we hope that we can deliver a product that is as good as any and better than many. Thank you.
And I thank the Honorable Spencer Brand for his presentation. Certainly, we are all delighted that the Quodoc Road project is complete. We know that that is a project that is near and dear to him and it's certainly an important project for all of us here in Nevis. I think the Quodoc Road through path, as we would know, is one of our main thoroughfares coming into town, it's one of the alternate ways of getting into, into Charles Town. Also, on the water filtration project, this is something that is certainly very important to us here on Nevis because it will give us access to another 400,000 gallons of water per, per day and that would certainly alleviate some of the stress that is on our system at this point. So I want to thank Minister Brand for that presentation and for highlighting those important things. Speaking about highlighting, I want to highlight that our next Town Hall meeting will be next week Thursday and we are going to be at the Charles Walters Community Center and that's in Hanleys Road. For those of you who don't know, it's the Charles Walters Community Center in Hanleys Road and it's going to be next week, Thursday, August 20th, 7:30 PM sharp. So that's our next Town Hall meeting as we continue our conversations with the people. Of course, we have one final speaker for you this evening and it is none other than the Premier of Nevis, the Honorable Mark Brantley.
Good evening, good evening ladies and gentlemen and thank you for being here. It's Thursday night and we don't want to detain you for longer than necessary. I want to thank my colleagues here at the head table, thank them for the information that they've imparted and I want to start by congratulating each and every one of them. COVID-19 has tested us in a very significant way and I think that we have responded as best as we can. They say the proof of the pudding is in the eating and thus far, through the grace of God and through the, through the hard work of many, we have not had any deaths, we have not had any hospitalizations. And the last COVID case that we recorded was the 6th of April 2020. It means therefore, that the island of Nevis has perhaps the record now in the Caribbean of being the longest without a COVID case and I'm very grateful for that and also grateful to the hard work that the health officials have been doing and I, every opportunity I mention her because I think she has done an excellent job, Dr. Judy Nisbet, who heads the Nevis COVID Task Force, they have been the people on the ground and they have delivered for us and so I'm very grateful to them. As you know, we have very scarce resources, I think everybody has been talking about that, as Minister of Finance, I have the unenviable task of trying to divide a single loaf of bread into 10, 15 because Mr. Brand wants money for roads, Mr. Evelyn wants money for food vouchers and for other things, Mr. Jeffers wants money for agriculture, we have to spend money for education and health, it is very difficult, but we have been trying our best to cope while at the same time ensuring that our public servants get paid, that they get paid on time and I want to extend gratitude to our bankers who have been so far very understanding. I would hope that they continue to be understanding, recognizing the difficulties that the island is facing. You would have heard the conversation that is ongoing now about the potential reopening of our borders that is anticipated for October and in the meantime, we have been making every effort to prepare ourselves. And so the Ministry of Tourism, the Nevis Tourism Authority and the Ministry of Health have partnered in a massive training of frontline workers that has been going on at NEPA for the past, I believe, eight or so days, well, eight days of training for the past two weeks. There are only two days left and we hope at that, the end of that, to have provided a basic training for those who are on the front lines. Of course, we expect that each property, hotel property, NASPA, the Immigration and Customs, that they will also have their own training in-house, but we are very pleased that we have proceeded and that we have done well. We know the training is supposed to happen on St. Kitts as well, but Nevis has progressed and we are now at the end, I believe we have only two days left of that training. For those who are out there and looking for something to do, because we recognize that a lot of people have been made, have been rendered unemployed as a consequence of COVID-19, I continue to encourage you to apply at SEDU, Small Enterprise Development Unit, particularly if you're female and if you're male below 35 years old. We have a facility there of $5 million that we are offering, not all 5 million to one person, but we are offering from that fund assistance for persons who want seed money to set up a business. So if you have a business idea and you want to implement that, we recognize and that's why we've targeted women and we've targeted men for 35 and under. So women and youth are the two target groups and the reason that we did that is because we recognized that those two groups were underserved by the traditional banking community. And a lot of people maybe need $10,000, $25,000 to implement a small business plan, but the banks are requiring of them too much and so we thought that the government stepping in, that we would stimulate the small business community. I'm proud of thus far, I am advised that we have provided about 13 loans thus far. Interest rate is quite attractive, I think it's 4%. I'd asked them to get it at three or three and a half, but I'm told that the best they could do was four, but notwithstanding that, the rates and the terms are good and I'm told that thus far, some 13 loans have been processed and those 13 loans are just about $540,000 or there. So it means that we still have about $4.5 million left potentially that we would like to lend to small business operators who are female or who are youth persons under 35 and so we encourage you to take advantage of that. As part and parcel of that, the Ministry of Tourism is also starting its taxi and tour operators training course. And whilst many may say, why are you doing a course now, because the hotels are closed? Of course, we anticipate and hope that the hotels will reopen, starting in October and continuing. And so for those who might want to get into that line of work, we are encouraging you because it is a requirement that you have to do the training and be certified by the Ministry of Tourism before you're qualified to get a taxi license. And so that course, I'm told, starts on Monday, the 17th. I think on radio last night, I said it was the coming Monday, but I think it's Monday, the 17th, I hope I have my dates correct. Monday coming is Monday 17th, okay, so I'm right, Monday, the 17th and you are encouraged if you're interested to sign up with the Ministry of Tourism. Now, like my colleagues, I won't stare you too long. What I will say however, is that despite the hardship and despite the difficulty, your government has continued to work hard. Your government has continued to try to provide stimulus to businesses, to households, to do the very best that we can despite the difficult circumstances, to seek to maintain some acceptable level of life for our people. And whilst the focus has been of course, on keeping our people safe, we are now shifting gears and trying to see how we can jumpstart the economy. And as a result of that, we have come up with a package, a very generous package of concessions for those who may want to do construction and the idea behind that package of concessions that those who can start a building And the idea behind that package of concessions is that those who can start a building, a home, between now and December thirty first, they get some very generous concessions where if it's your first home, you get customs duties off all of your materials, you get customs service charge off, and you pay only VAT. If it is you're doing a renovation or you're building a second or third home, then you pay VAT only, and that would be on the materials above thirty thousand dollars. If it is you're doing a commercial building and you're over one million dollars, you will only pay custom service charge of twelve percent. You pay no VAT and no customs duties. And if you're building a building which is under a million dollars, you again pay only VAT. The only condition on those last two is that eighty percent of those working on your site have to be nationals of St. Kitts and Nevis. We feel that this is a way that people who might want to build but were a bit apprehensive that this is an opportunity for them to engage. And I've had good feedback that that project has motivated the banks and others to engage and to seek to lend because the banks all tell us that they're liquid. Them being liquid is of no help to us. We want the liquidity to flow throughout the country so that people can build and we can have some construction activity. We want to make it clear that we are offering these concessions, taking off customs in some cases, taking off VAT in some cases, taking off the custom service charge to stimulate construction. And many people immediately said to me, well, that means everybody's going to go to Miami and buy, or in this case, you can't go, send to Miami and buy. And we're saying, no, that whilst you can choose to do that, we're encouraging people to buy at our local hardware, our local businesses, and you will still get the concession. So if you choose to shop at TDC or Hossfords or Island Tires and Hardware, you still get that concession that is being offered. And that is what we're hoping to do, to stimulate activity in the economy and keep us going. We have also done a lot of things that perhaps were simple or perceived to be simple, but turned out to be quite innovative. For example, I went around and I begged, I didn't borrow, this occasion I begged, and we said we wanted about twelve thousand masks. And these were the reusable masks, those that can be washed and used again. And some very kind persons living here on Nevis who have made a home here, they responded very positively. And I was able to raise some forty thousand U.S. dollars that we used to buy these masks. And then through Dr. Nisbet and the team, we were able to distribute those masks throughout the island of Nevis. I feel very proud of that simple initiative because if you're going to mandate, as we are now mandating, that people must wear masks in public, then I think that giving people the masks means that when the police hold you, you can't say you don't have any mask. When the police hold you, you can't say you didn't have the ten dollars to buy a mask because the police will tell you the government gave you a mask. So the idea really was to give our people the tools to better protect themselves. And it's interesting because sometimes you feel you're doing things and people aren't paying attention. But I listened to the Prime Minister of Jamaica recently, Andrew Holness. And here was Andrew Holness saying to Jamaicans that his government is now trying to source masks to be able to distribute to households in Jamaica. And I said, look how far ahead the island of Nevis is. And so I feel very proud of that because I've not yet seen any other Caribbean island that has replicated that effort despite the fact that it was a simple gesture. It was something that was done and fortunately did not come at any cost to the taxpayer because we had persons living here who were prepared to contribute. We have also done other innovative things. We've provided masks to all of our churches. We've provided hand sanitizer to all of our churches. And people may ask, well, why? And the reason was that when our churches reopened, they had these Covid protocols that they had to follow. And I confess that I went to a church service recently, and I forgot my mask. I confess, I forgot my mask. And when I got to the church service, I said, my goodness, I've forgotten my mask. And I was so pleased that one of the very masks that the government gave to the church were able to present me with one so that I could go into church and serve the Lord. So I'm very happy for that. It shows that that too was a good initiative. We have, through our stimulus, benefited agriculture in a significant way. You would have heard from the Deputy Premier, I have never seen agriculture so energized on the island of Nevis as I'm seeing it now. Everybody, it seems on Nevis now, is a farmer, backyard farming, whatever kind of farming. And I am very, very impressed, and I join the Deputy Premier in encouraging our people to buy local and to eat local and to support these farmers. I also join him in calling on our farmers to pass on some of the significant savings that they receive from this government to the consumer. There's no reason why watermelon, for example, should be selling at three dollars and fifty cents per pound, as my brother Eric likes to tell me, watermelon is just water. So we are saying to, and it's heavy, so we're saying to our people, be reasonable. Remember, the government has removed the cost of water. Six months, you get free water, free fertilizer, free plowing, free land clearance. We even have provided on some occasions labor that has come from our agricultural department to assist persons. We have done so much to try and assist, and so we ask that our farmers, please, be reasonable with our people and allow our people to eat because everybody has suffered from Covid. And so I make that appeal, that you can't take all the savings for yourself. We're asking you to pass those savings on to the consumer so that our people can eat and eat healthy. Ladies and gentlemen, so far, I'm advised that some eight hundred homes have benefited from seeds, some one hundred and twenty rolls of fish pot wire have been distributed, and more are now being distributed according to our Minister of Agriculture and Deputy Premier. Some fifty livestock farmers benefited from fencing wire, fifty crop farmers, two hundred backyard farmers. We have really done an excellent job, in my view, of providing some stimulus to our farmers. A hundred and fifty-four livestock farmers got free feed through a partnership with EC GC from St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Another project that I'm very proud of, and I'm going to end, this is the penultimate thing that I'm going to say. A project that I'm very proud of is that, you see these gentlemen up here? The Cabinet took a decision. Not only did we take a picket, you all start getting back your full pay ready? Three months, some took a picket of ten percent for three months. In my case, I took a picket of a hundred percent, and I said, well, I will take it until Covid is over, but my goodness, Covid doesn't appear to be going anywhere, so I may have to reevaluate. But for now, we took a picket, and we thought that that was important, to lead from the front, to say to our people, listen, we understand the difficulty. And even though it might be symbolic, that symbolism was important to inspire our people. But we did not only do that. Through resources, we were able to generate thirteen and a half thousand dollars each month, and we said we'd do it for three months, May, June, and July. And from that thirteen and a half thousand, we wanted to provide food vouchers for families that were in need. And so we have done that for the month of May, we have done that for the month of June, and you know what is so beautiful? That people were inspired by what we did. And so I started to get phone calls from people who said, listen, I want to contribute five hundred dollars, I want to contribute a thousand dollars. And so what was thirteen thousand five hundred that we committed from our pockets each month that ballooned in the first month to twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars, in the second month to forty-five thousand dollars. And I'm proud to say that today I was advised that the final vouchers have been prepared, and that is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The vouchers are a hundred and fifty dollars each, which we were advised, because we took advice on it, from the supermarket could buy a reasonable amount of food, provided, of course, you are not buying the most expensive brands. The only limitation we put on our voucher was that you could not use it for cigarettes or alcohol. And so people were encouraged to use it for food. We partnered with Value Mart, I want to thank them, I want to thank Oscar Walters, who really has championed this. And I am proud to say that in May, we would have distributed twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars worth of food vouchers to a hundred and sixty-two families. In June, we would have distributed forty-five thousand dollars worth of food vouchers to three hundred families. And tomorrow, we will distribute the last batch, which is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and forty-five families. It would mean, therefore, that this initiative by your ministers from their pockets has been able to provide food to six hundred and seven families at a global cost of ninety-one thousand and fifty dollars over the past three months. I think that that is significant. That was my penultimate thing. I will now say my final thing, and that is to say how pleased I am with the response from a health perspective. We have boosted up our health services, we have invested in more equipment, we have partnered and obtained more supplies, and right now, we have six ventilators on island. We are expecting another two shortly, and we know that there are some en route from the United States. As Minister of Foreign Affairs, I handled that with the U.S. And so we expect ten coming into the Federation. We expect, of course, that Nevis should get most of those since St. Kitts has a significant number of ventilators over there already. We have had now two infrared systems, we have two defibrillators, we have, and I'm very proud of this, I want to congratulate Madam Hazel Brandy-Williams, she's not here with us tonight, but ladies and gentlemen, your government has two brand-new ambulances sitting down at the Long Point Port right now. I don't believe there's a time in our history where we've ever had two brand-new ambulances at the same time, and so I'm very happy about that. And as I'm talking about brand-new stuff, I believe that it's an opportune time to say that, again, we have partnered with an entity called Winsong Foundation, and they have committed two brand-new school buses for our children. We hope that those will be, we'll be able to access those very shortly. And just yesterday, we had a briefing from Minister Lybert and his team, and the prominent secretary, Mr. Barrett in the Ministry of Education, said that because now of the social distancing that is required, physical distancing on the buses, that we might need more buses. And so I said, well, let us see what we can do. And I told him last night, Minister Lybert, I didn't say this to you, forgive me, but I told him last night, see if you can prepare quickly a new submission to them, and instead of two buses now, which have already agreed to give us, ask them if we can get four. So we sent off that last night to ask for four buses, and I fell on my knees and I said to them that because of Covid, the bus that they gave us could only carry half. So it is important that we get an additional two. So I'm hopeful that we have had two committed, they've agreed to give us two, that they will give us the other two, and that will equip us in a significant way in terms of our fleet. We will be getting bus attendants now, we will need full-time cleaners at our schools now, so there will be some opportunities that will be provided there for those people as well who might be interested. Covid has changed the world, and Nevis is responding. And I will thank you very much for your continued confidence in us. We have responded, and I believe we have responded well. We are a serious government, and we have responded in a serious and sober way to the biggest threat that our islands would have seen in the past several decades. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions. It is my pleasure to be here with the team, bringing the government to you, into your communities, and certainly we look forward to hear all that you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Premier. Thank you very much, colleagues. We have heard from all of the ministers and the premier. The floor is now open for questions, for comments, for general statements. There's a microphone that's in the middle of the hall, so if there's anybody who has a question, comment, or anything that they want to say, then you can indicate by raising your hands and then step forward. And identify yourselves when you come to the microphone also. Do we have any questions? I know that our presentations were comprehensive, but certainly there must be something that folks would want to know. Do we have any questions from the floor? Seems as though we don't have any questions.
Well, since there are questions. Let me just correct something. It turns out I've given you some erroneous information because I told you that for this month, the food voucher program that is being done by the ministers of the NIA from their pockets, starting with thirteen and a half thousand dollars, and of course, that now has generated additional funds from people who have been encouraged. I said that the first month, we did twenty-four thousand three hundred, the second month, we did forty-five thousand, and the third month, I had indicated that we would have done twenty-one thousand seven five zero. I just got a message to say that that number is wrong, and in fact, in the final month, we've done twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty. So the total then is ninety-three thousand one four hundred and fifty dollars, and that would have benefited not six hundred and seven, but six hundred and twenty-three families. So the news is actually better than I had indicated initially. So again, I want to congratulate everybody at this table, I want to thank them. And you know something I believe I ought to say? It might be inelegant, but I want to say it, no election coming. That is important because people tend to feel that you're doing things because an election is coming. There's no election coming unless these gentlemen have called one that I don't have. So it means, therefore, that we are doing this because we have committed that no family in Nevis should go hungry in this difficult period of Covid. And I believe that a government that cares about people, a government that says that its guiding mantra is our people matter most, is the kind of government that we need and the kind of government that we should continue to stay with because it's a government that has demonstrated its commitment to our people. So I just wanted to correct that and again to invite questions or comments if you have any. Minister Lybert, I think that it appears that everybody's happy. So maybe we should take an extra hour to update further, but the circumstances being as they are, I don't know. Is there no question, no comment? A rather quiet audience.
I think we should take the time to announce again that we're going to be in Hanley's Road next week, Thursday, same time, seven thirty. And we can look forward to, I think some robust questions will come from the people of Gingerland.
I think so.
Okay. So if we don't have any further questions, then perhaps we can call it a night?
Well, this conversation was a little one-sided, but I want to thank those who came out. I'm happy that we have the opportunity to come and to share information with you. And there's someone who's putting up their hand? Oh, okay, is a microphone there, sir? Yeah, I'm sorry? Okay. Okay. You need a weed eater? Okay. All right, well, that, we hear you, and that's a conversation we'll have to have, okay? All right, good, thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out, thank you for being here, thank you for your continued support, and we invite you, of course, to our next town hall meeting, which will be next Thursday at the Community Centre in Hanleys Road, and we're hopeful that at seven thirty, we will have a packed house there, and we will be engaging with you, and hopefully you'll be engaging with us, and we will pass information to you and have that conversation that for us is so important. So thank you for coming out, St Paul's, it is good to see you. Minister Brand, congratulations again on Craddock Road, I think it's a significant achievement for you, a feather in your cap, and I drove on it tonight, and it feels good, and I pray and hope that the people of Craddock Road will cherish that road, because somebody in Craddock Road told me that it's been about fifty years. So the last time that road was done, Minister Brand wasn't born yet, so I'm happy that he has done the best that he could and that the people of Craddock Road will be the beneficiaries. I can't end, however, without appealing to him, please come finish Brownhill Road. Please, Brownhill Road needs to be done, he has promised me faithfully, I don't like when he says in a week or so, because that always leads to problems, so in a week, if you can finish Brownhill for me, I'd be very happy, that's the plan, okay, I like that, I like that. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out, and we look forward to seeing you again next week, Thursday, in Hanleys Road. Thank you, and God bless you.